Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council November meeting. Before we move into our meeting agenda, I will have our public comments, which are, "The town's public comment period shall be reserved for those citizens that have signed up to address the town council or a board or committee at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting pursuant to the town's public comment policy as outlined above." Tonight, we have two people to speak under public comments. Our first is LeAnn Riley, and if you will come forward to the podium, and if you'll state your name, your address, and if you live in the town limits, and Ms. Amber will keep time, and she is three minutes, but we're glad that you're here.
LeAnn Riley, 119 Bonifay Drive in Smyrna.
Great.
And y'all have seen me before, I think it was last year or a couple of years ago, about St. Francis getting finished. And the town manager that was here at the time didn't seem too interested in it. We need to get it finished. And I have been told by good sources within the city that we just need to come to y'all and let you know, we need to get it finished. It's getting very hard to get in and out of Cedar Forest. The other day, I personally, and it's happened several times, and it probably has with other people too, could not get in to turn onto Cedar Forest and had to go all the way down to the next subdivision entrance, which is St. John's Woods, and turn in there, and then go up and turn, go all the way back. I know that the owners of the property, they don't want to do it, but we are coming and asking the city to do it. And it's also for safety, because there's 200 houses back there, and one way in and one way out. Y'all put the speed hump in, and now it's got bars, and it's on a hill, so we had to go over it in the snow last year, and it was hard to maneuver in the snow on that incline. And now the bars are there, and there's no telling, because people slide, and people get stuck, and a mailbox was demolished last year. So we have that to contend with. But a lot of people in the past have worried about extra traffic. There's not going to be extra traffic, because unfortunate for the people on Spring Hill, that extension and then extending Wildwood and making it a road up and around to Spring Hill, it's going to be the cut through. It already is. People on Facebook are already complaining. But we really need that back there open, for safety reasons, and just another way in and out. The traffic on Nashville Highway has gotten hideous, and it is hard to get in and out. Y'all went in and you repainted the lines to get in? The traffic, they will still back up in those lines like they did that day I was trying to get in, and then they will, if you're in the lane to turn left, I don't know how many times, and it's happened countless other people, they've almost been hit head-on, because people are not paying attention, they're wanting to get over to turn left on Enin Springs, and you're sitting there waiting to turn into Cedar Forest, and you're about to get caught.
Three minutes, Mayor.
You see a car coming towards you, and you're like in a panic, and then they finally see you, because you have nowhere to go, you're sitting there. But I had to go to another subdivision to get in, and other people have told me on Facebook they've had to.
Okay, thank you so much. I think your three minutes are up, but we appreciate you coming to address us.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Christina Sahara, and I apologize if I've mispronounced the last name. Dave, do you want to talk a little bit about this access?
Me and Ms. Riley actually spoke last week about this issue, and I was able to share with her what I know so far, which is, one, that it's been brought to my attention. I've been out to the site to take a look at what the real issue is, and what we've really got is about 10 yards shy of a touchdown of road that needs to be completed. It's currently on private property, and it is in the preliminary plat of the developer's property, but the real issue is, is that there's no incentive right now for the developer to complete that, as the commercial properties at this point have not been developed. So I think the important thing to recognize first and foremost is that it is ultimately, at this point, the developer's responsibility to complete that road. Now, I haven't had an opportunity to speak with the developer on this, but could he, could we get that property and complete it? Potentially. I've heard that that's a possibility, but I can't confirm that yet without having some discussions with the ownership and the developer. So I intend to do that. I do know that this roadway could potentially be in the area of $250,000 to $300,000. And the question that I want to be able to answer for you is, is that a good linear foot cost for a roadway, or from an economy of scale standpoint, is that going to be really expensive? And maybe there's other ways that we can look at this, and doing this with another roadway project to create those economies of scale and those sorts of things. So I don't have all the answers yet, but to say that we have had a conversation last week. I am aware of the issue. I intend to dive into this a little bit more, get an understanding from the developer, what he's willing and not willing to do, and then I can come back to the council and make some thorough recommendations for you. It is, like I said, between $250,000 to $300,000, so whether or not that's even feasible in this budget year, I don't know, but we can talk about planning in the future.
That takes care of public comments.
I got a question, if I can.
Sure.
Is there any, I know you kind of touched on this already, is there any idea of the developer sharing in the cost, because his plat is not recorded, right?
Correct.
He has not recorded that plat. The commercial property that we're talking about on Enin Springs, those owners have discussed selling some of that property that they own. I shared with them when they called me about that, that most likely, if you sell that property, you're going to be required to leave room for a road to come through there, because that's just the piece of the puzzle that would have to take place, right?
Correct.
So, but to LeAnn's point, I know we've all heard this quite a bit, and she's right about one thing, Cedar Forest getting in and out of there at that intersection by the light is a nightmare. So I'd love to see us maybe get with the developer and see if he's, he might be willing to go ahead and record his plat, and maybe we can work as a team together, something like that. I don't know if that's even feasible or not, but I don't want to see him get hurt.
Okay, other comments or questions? Okay, then I will call our meeting to order, and tonight, our prayer is going to be done by Chaplain Bob Horn from the Smyrna Police Department, and our pledge is going to be done by Brayden Mangrum, who is a Boy Scout of America Eagle Scout. So if you all will stand with us, please.
Shall we pray? Our great God, our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy holy name. Father, we've come before thee, and we're thankful for the blessings of this day, we're thankful for opportunities to meet and to be able to discuss business for the town and for the people that live here. We pray to Father for the people that lead and take that responsibility here, for the citizens, that we pray that they would be able to look into thee for guidance and for all of the good of humanity that's here. We pray that as citizens that we live and learn to live together and live well, that we may be able to look into thee and glorify thy name in all that we do, but as we care for one another, as we live here with one another. Pray that you continue with each of us, forgive us when we fail thee, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain, and pray. Amber, roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
Here.
Councilwoman Peoples.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here. Move on to item four, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the October 8, 2024 regular meeting and the October 30, 2024 work session meeting of the town council. Are there any additions or corrections that need to be made? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item five is correspondence or communications. Amber or Dave, anything under correspondence or communications?
None for me.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item six, which is awards and recognition. Our first award, I mean, our first recognition is achievement of Eagle Scout by a Smyrna citizen Brayden Mangrum, and Amber, I think you have a little bit to tell us about Brayden.
Yes, ma'am. Brayden's scouting journey began in first grade when he joined the Cub Scouts, marking the start of a lifelong commitment to the Boy Scouts of America. Over the years, Brayden progressed through the ranks. His dedication and hard work culminated in 2024 when he achieved the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. For his Eagle Scout project, Brayden undertook the construction of a deck at Foothills Camp and Retreat Center. Alongside his family and mentors, he dedicated hours to the planning and building of the deck, which was designed to serve as a durable and functional space for camp counselors and missionaries on furlough. Brayden has earned 29 merit badges. He has received the D N Chief Service Award and the National Outdoor Achievement Award. He is an active member of the Stewart's Creek High School J R O T C and holds the rank of Cadet Captain. He is also active in the J R O T C Color Guard as Lead Rifle. Brayden is set to graduate in May of 2025 from Stewart's Creek High School and plans to attend college before joining the Army.
Brayden, if you'll come forward. So first of all, we want to say congratulations. It is such an honor to have you here tonight. I know it takes a lot of hard work, not just from you, but also from family and friends as well, to earn this honor. So we have a certificate for you tonight, and if you will, Chief Bill will, and all three of these individuals will have their papers here. Is there anything you'd like to say? Okay, let's give Brayden a huge round of applause. So next, we'd like to recognize Rebecca Jenkins of Central Magnet student, a Central Magnet student who is also a Smyrna citizen, as a National Merit Scholar semifinalist. Amber?
Yes, ma'am. Rebecca Jenkins is a prestigious, well, excuse me, she's a National Merit semifinalist, as Mayor Reed stated. The National Merit is a prestigious nationwide scholarship competition that recognizes the top 1% of students who take the PSAT, designated them as a semifinalist. These semifinalists then apply to become finalists, with the majority, around 95%, advancing based on their qualifying test scores that meet the same high standard of excellence, typically in the 99th percentile. While we won't know officially until February whether Rebecca is a finalist, she is already qualified due to her perfect ACT score. National Merit Scholars are highly regarded by colleges and universities, and both public and private institutions often offer recipients full scholarships and recognition of their outstanding academic achievements. Rebecca's remarkable accomplishments place her among the top high school students in the country, and we are proud to celebrate her recognition today.
Rebecca, if you'll come forward. Rebecca, there's so many of us up here that probably had close to the same grades that you did.
If you put them all together.
Exactly, exactly. So we just wanted to say congratulations, and you represent the town of Smyrna really well, and we wish you the best. Is there, so what do you plan on doing next?
I'm going to go to college. I'm thinking about going to the University of Alabama, and I want to study chemistry.
Ah, very good. So, well, good. Well, thank you so much for coming, and congratulations to you and your family, because I am sure that it is a team effort. Thank you. So Dave, at this point, I think you have a few congratulations in order, is that correct?
I do, Mayor.
Okay.
The first one, I want to recognize our dedicated staff in the Utilities Department. The Tennessee Association of Utility Districts sent their notification to all systems requesting assistance for multiple utilities in Upper East Tennessee due to the devastating impact of Hurricane Helene on October 2, 2024. After discussions, Irwin Utilities became the focus of efforts based upon their needs. And on October 6, 2024, Mark Parker was sent to Irwin to complete a damage assessment to determine where our crew could best support Irwin. Mark returned on November 9, 2024, and a plan to assist was put into motion. Irwin experienced major issues with their sewer system and water system. On October 28, 2024, a crew consisting of Johnny Moore, crew lead, Josh McCormick, and Freddie Aguilar were dispatched to Irwin to fuse together approximately 6,000 feet of 6-inch HDPE piping to be temporarily used as a sewer force main. Johnny and his crew also fused 3,000 feet of 2-inch HDPE for temporary water service. The crew returned to Smyrna on November 2, 2024, and I want to recognize them for their outstanding efforts of doing such a wonderful job out there in East Tennessee with those devastated folks and community out there. So if you're here, if you could please come up.
So before we move on to the picture, I would be curious if y'all would tell us a little bit about what you experienced when you were in East Tennessee. Who wants to?
I'll take the lead.
Okay, okay.
When I went up, we got with the staff with Irwin Utilities to figure out what was down, what they needed to help on. It was quickly apparent that the sewer plant was down, and then probably, probably close to a third of their sewer system and some of their water system was completely out of service. So we come back, these three guys rogered up, and they stepped off, and due to their hard work, they were a big part of getting a major part of Irwin Utility Systems back in order, and provided a lot of sanitary sewer and water service that those folks didn't have if it wasn't for these three guys.
Was it as bad, or was it worse on the ground than it was what we were seeing?
Worse, worse. Pictures doesn't do that place justice. And we were, I was up there two weeks after it, and they were up there close to a month. I mean, you guys want, y'all have anything you want to add? That's what it is all.
What I want you all to know is, it doesn't matter where our neighbors are in need, whether it's right next door, or whether it's hundreds of miles east of us, we're always willing to step up and help. And so we just want to say thank you for representing our community and doing that. It means a lot, so. You've got to do the operatic sorry. Thanks, you guys. Y'all are welcome to stay for the meeting if you want, we would love for you to, but don't feel like you're obligated to if you don't want to. So your choice. So I think you have a really exciting recognition next, a little one, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one more for this evening. Very, very pleased to be able to present this, but I want to congratulate our Assistant Town Manager and Finance Director Rex Gather upon receiving the Government Finance Officers' Association 2024 recognition of Outstanding Public Service Award. Rex has dedicated more than 30 years to the town of Smyrna, serving as Finance Director for the past 14 years. Under his leadership, the town secured a AAA credit rating, ensuring the town's legacy pension plan will be fully funded, and reduced general debt. Rex strengthened the town's financial position, leaving Smyrna with stronger reserves, revitalized water and sewer fund, while fostering collaboration across departments. Known for his integrity and commitment to providing accurate, timely financial information, Rex has guided the town through major capital projects, including a new fire station, expanded infrastructure, and the development of Cedarstone Park. As Finance Manager Sierra Lowry notes, Rex is the ultimate civil servant. His legacy will impact Smyrna citizens for generations to come. Rex, congratulations on your award.
I'm full of credit.
Rex would also like to offer you a contract extension.
Do you mind if we use his department up here, too?
No, absolutely, yeah, that'd be great.
You thought you were going to get off easy, didn't you?
Get in the press.
I'll get in there.
I thought it was Ben who was scanning stuff.
So I have to tell you, I found out about this on Facebook when Rex's daughter posted about it, and I sent Dave a message, and I said, "Dave, did you know about this?" And he's like, "I didn't know about it." And so that's just the way Rex is. But there's one thing I know, if Rex says we financially can do it, we financially can do it, because Rex is pretty tight with our money. So Rex, congratulations.
What if he says no?
What if he says no, then we try to figure out a way around that. Okay, we'll move on to items. Dave, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Item seven, our consent agenda, these are items that are determined by our town manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing individual discussion, but if there is an item that a council member would like for us to pull out and discuss or vote on individually, we can do that. I do like to read the items so that those here in attendance, as well as those at home, know what we're voting on. It's a pretty long agenda, I mean, pretty long consent agenda tonight, so bear with me. Item A is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Presidio to purchase hardware and service to upgrade the town's phone system. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Waypoint for Firewall Installation Services. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Waypoint for Firewall Management Services. Item D is approval and authorization for revisions to the police department policies pertaining to appearance-assigned vehicles and ITS CCTV cameras. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Tennessee Rehabilitation Center relative to the recreation field used by the Parks and Recreation Department. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the renewal of the Smyrna Greenway Trail leased properties with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute Change Order 11 with Cleary Construction for the Genie Lane Extension Project. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the proposal with Hayworth Meyer Bowlin Professional Engineers LLC for survey and design for the Rock Springs Road over Rock Springs Branch Project. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Neil Schaefer for additional construction, engineering, and inspection services associated with the ITS Phase 3, 4, and 5 project. Item J is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the bid package for Phase 2 of Basin A Sewer Rehab. Item K is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Thomas &amp; Hutton for an additional year of sewer flow monitoring. Item L is consideration and authorization of a list of items to be auctioned through online surplus sale with GovDeals. And our last one is item M, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Greater Nashville Regional Council, better known as GNRC, to conduct verification of the special census. Is there an item that council would like to pull off and talk about individually, or have questions about?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and consent agenda is approved. Our old business, tonight, we have three public hearings. Our first public hearing is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map 33, Partial 73.03, to go from R3 with ESO to PRD with ESO requested by Janet Ibrahim Nasif. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 2.1 acres and is located on Rocky Fork Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the same, you all have seen this already on First Reading, it is on Rocky Fork Road, it's about 800 feet east of the intersection with Enin Springs Road West. The land use plan does designate this property as a part of the 24 Gateway character area, which would support a mix of uses and services of both local and regional in scale, such as hospitality, retail, restaurant, and multifamily uses. The surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and PUD, which is the addition to Villages of Valley Green PUD that is to the south of this property. This proposed PRD is for five duplexes, so 10 total units. The units would be 1,989 square feet per side, including a two-car garage. Each unit would be three bedrooms. The exterior elevations are required to be a stone foundation, brick on the first floor, and cement siding on the second floor. One access point is shown to Rocky Fork Road, with all units being accessed off of the internal private street. The site does lie within the Enin Springs overlay, and the proposed elevations, as required by the Planning Commission, would meet those requirements of the overlay. Landscaping, lighting, buffering, and screening plans are required to comply with the overlay and would be reviewed in detail with the site plan submittal if this rezoning is approved. Sewer would be extended through an existing public utility and drainage adjustment that exists adjoining the site to an existing sewer manhole within Gamblewood Drive. The Planning Commission did review this request, did recommend approval, with the condition that the architectural elevations be revised to show brick on the first floor for all four sides of the structures. And with that condition, staff would also recommend approval.
Any comments or questions for Kevin on this? We've had quite a bit of discussion on this one.
Just clarifications. So the adjoining properties to it, they're all undeveloped. This would be the only one in that line of four properties, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, since this is a public hearing, I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, go to council for a motion. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
For motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to our second public hearing, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map 49G, Group F, Parcels 1.00, 2.00, 3.00, 4.00, 5.00, and 6.00, to go from R1 to R4. It's requested by Josh Newman. The properties requested to be rezoned contain approximately five acres and are located at 308 through 330 Chicken Pike. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Again, this is something you saw last month on first reading. These are all Parcels due front, Chicken Pike, and between the intersection with Old Nashville Highway and that, the other piece or other leg of Chicken Pike. Land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and PRD, which is Kentrell Farms PRD in town and RMM in Rutherford County. Each of the requested parcels has an existing duplex on it. These appear to have been built in 1983 or '84. The area was annexed into Smyrna in 1992. So as such, they are legally non-conforming within the R1 district. These parcels are not currently served by public sewer. CUD has indicated that adequate flow does exist in this area. As we discussed last month, and as well at the planning commission, these certainly could be redeveloped if public sewer were extended, and so that it could be reconfigured or redeveloped using the existing road frontage. That's not been indicated at this time as its desire, but that certainly could happen in the future. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Council questions or comments on this one?
Only one question's come up really in my mind, and I think I already know the answer, but hypothetically speaking, if this person decided to develop and put new units there, is there any requirement for them to remove the old units?
The only way they would be required to remove the old units is if they were, obviously, there could only be two units on a lot, so, but if they wanted to somehow reconfigure them, keep the old units, and if there was room to create new lots in between them, certainly that could happen. There's nothing requiring them to do, to remove them.
Is there any tool or mechanism that we have that would require that?
No. Not only if there was some sort of a building code issue where they were substandard, and the codes department reviewed them and determined that it could be condemned and removed, that could happen certainly. Outside of that, no, there would be none.
I think that was part of the motivation behind making sure this was, if we were to approve it, I think it was part of the motivation to make sure we were getting new units and some of the older units that are in some need of repair would not stand any longer.
So you think they could, you think they could leave?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking Kevin.
So Kevin, let's talk through that. So what would that look like?
I mean, the only way they could, if they were to redevelop the property, redevelop these six lots, for them to keep the existing ones, they would have to reconfigure lot lines, still meet the minimum lot size requirements. And if there was room in between, somehow, there's really only one space, just looking at it, between that, if you're going-
Between those last two?
The last two is really the only place I could see, probably could reconfigure, maybe put one in there in between those two. I think otherwise, you're probably going to have to tear down and rebuild. I mean, I still don't think there's really any way to add any more units.
Well, and I think that's my question really is, could some be added to what's existing, to what's there? Because for me, that was the motivation behind it all.
Have you gotten any indication from the landowner what their plan was?
No. They, this came in, they mailed in the application and the fee, and we haven't, I don't know if I've ever had any conversations with them. They live out of state, Lake Florida.
So today, this is non-conforming?
Correct.
So when we change it to R4, does it become conforming?
From a zoning standpoint, yes.
Yeah.
Because duplex, that's the district for duplexes on that.
But with it being conforming, you think they only could get one, possibly one more in, but that's only with reconfiguring the lot lines?
Correct. And as they exist today, yes. I think if you tear them all down, you know, things come in, new things come into options. If you tear them all down, take out the, or extend sewer, so they're not all on subject systems, which they are currently, that, surely that could open up more possibilities. But as they exist today, I think really those last two, if you take out that lot line, create a new lot in between, I think is really the only way you could have an additional building built.
But if you did tear them down, like you said, you said there, they can get maybe how many more on there if they reconfigure?
Well, you have, I'm just going by the existing road frontage.
Right.
There was a GIS measurement by me, it's not a survey. You've got about 200 feet of frontage on Old Nashville Highway and about 1,000 feet on Chicken Pike. The minimum lot width, 75 feet, so certainly you could, with 75 feet of road frontage and 1,000 feet, that's what, 12, 12 lots potentially?
Sewer's right there at Kentrell Farms, or does it carry over into the PRD?
There is sewer within Kentrell Farms. There's also sewer in Patton Retreat and Burton Farms across the street. I don't know where the most logical place where it would be extended from would be necessarily, but there is sewer in, it's general proximity to that, yeah.
But we, we were kind of having a little discussion, but we'd be looking at, if they tore it down, we'd be looking at 12 new, six units, 12?
No, 12 new duplexes potentially, yes.
Yeah, 12 duplexes.
24 units.
But, but new ones as opposed to?
Correct.
Okay.
But the lines of the, the property lines could not change. I mean, this is subdivided, and these are the lots, correct?
Well, you could reconfigure. I mean, they would have to-
Wouldn't have to go to planning?
They would have to come to planning commission, yeah. It's not something that could happen without a planning permission review.
And that's the layer, but, but if you have the zoning, this came up in planning the other night on the property.
Right.
If you have the zoning, it's hard to say no, right? I mean, if you have the zoning, it's a little difficult to go and say, "Well, we don't want you to do it," because you have the zoning for it. And so that's why I want to make sure, if we're applying the zoning here, we all understand, yes, they'd have to come back to planning, but it'd be hard to say no to them if they've got the zone.
In regards to, the concern is adding one more unit with the current buildings being left.
Yeah, that part really isn't, it's not too big of a deal.
Yeah.
I think when we looked at this initially, we just thought it sure would be an improvement if they came in and redeveloped it. It would look nicer, be a nicer-looking property, so.
See, what let's do, let's, since it's a public hearing, let's go to the public and see what the public has to say, and then if we have more discussion, we'll come back. So is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against this item? If you'll come forward and state your name, address, and if you live in the city limits?
Thank you, Mayor Dan Eppright, 1114 Seward Street, Smyrna, Tennessee, inside the city limits. And I'm probably just a little slow. I'm not sure I followed all of that. And I would think that if this is all happening back in 1988, this is probably the sins of the fathers. Nothing anybody here has done, things that happened way back when. But how did it, how did it get annexed if it was non-compliant? I mean, I don't understand how that happens, and I don't think we're set up where that can happen now. So just along those lines, you know, how'd we get here?
Right. Anyone else to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and Kevin, do you kind of want to address that?
Yeah, I wasn't here in 1992 when the property was annexed, so I can't speak to exactly what happened or why it was zoned R1 and not R4 in 1992 or whatever. That entire area of Chicken Pike, including the property behind it that's now the PRD of Kentrell Farms, all that area was zoned R1. I can say that R1 is-
It's sort of the default.
It's kind of the default zoning. That's the lowest-density zoning Smyrna has. When Smyrna could annex, and the Smyrna municipalities in general in Tennessee could annex on our own initiative, that was the default zoning that a lot of areas were given when large areas were annexed. And I do believe this was annexed, these tracts of land were included, it was a much larger area that was annexed all at one time, and so it was kind of the default zoning. So most likely, that is what happened, is it was zoned R1 because the entire area was zoned R1. And we've had some rezonings, you know, the Patton Retreat development is R3, most of Burton Farms is R3, but most of the rest of Chick, and then Kentrell Farms, most of Chicken Pike is still zoned R1 today. And these, including these, there's three other duplexes, the next three tracts are duplexes as well that this gentleman doesn't own, and so they weren't requested for rezoning. But that's most likely what happened back in 92.
So if we, if we denied this request, it would still be zoned R1, non-conforming. The only thing the developer, builder, property owner could do is, if they made any change, they would have to tear down and rebuild as R1.
Correct. And they couldn't be duplexes, they would have to, well, yeah.
They could leave them alone like it is.
Leave them alone like it is, or build houses, yeah.
Did they leave it at R4, sir, and put live effects in there?
No.
So I guess my question is, are we comfortable with moving forward with this? Could we possibly get more clarification from the landowner?
Well, that'd be good, but the landowner could sell this tomorrow.
You're right.
And then it's a different landowner, so. I think I'm comfortable with it from the standpoint of what Kevin's telling us. It's, to do anything there without tearing something down is going to be awfully difficult due to the lot size, but, and the layout. I don't know how you put units in front or behind the units that are there now. To take them out, Kevin, if, if, I think we should, you talked about this in the last meeting, but let's say that landowner took all of those older units out and takes his tract of land, how many units could he get on his tract of land? How many duplexes?
Well, again, assuming he just uses the existing road, again, you're looking at 12, depending on how, how he divides them up, 12, maybe 13 duplexes. Because you've got enough road frontage there, 1,000 feet of frontage, at 75 foot of lot.
Six or seven buildings?
No, 12 to 13.
12 buildings.
12 buildings, okay.
12, so it would be 24 to 26 units would kind of be the max. Because you've got 75 feet, if you've got 75 feet, I mean, you're doing 75-foot lots, and that's all you're doing, straight up. If you got, you got to make sure the topo works, all those kind of things, but, you know, that's, I'm just, that's the max, that's the max, yeah.
But which would be similar to what's behind it.
That's right, that's where-
Correct, you've got towns behind it.
Yeah.
But even at that, a much cleaner product, I mean.
Yeah, and conform. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
So just based on that, so that we wouldn't have any road issues, I understand it looks like it's on, it's on a dead-end road anyway.
That's that chicken pie.
It's Old Nashville Highway.
Yeah.
That's old and new chicken pie. Yeah, the hatch marks are Old Nashville Highway.
That's what I'm looking at, okay, okay.
It's just because we have an annex that part of the road.
Gotcha.
Correct, that part of Old Nashville Highway is on the town limits.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to know what he, what they're thinking. To your point, doesn't matter if they sell it, just because they tell us what they're thinking doesn't mean that's what's going to happen. Essentially, the way I'm looking at it is, we've got six units there now with duplexes, so that's 12 units, six buildings, 12 units. Max capacity would be 12 buildings, 24 units, if they could get all of it. And that would require reconfiguring, removal, destroying and rebuilding, and sewer extension, and coming back to us, at least for that portion.
And what's to the northwest of it there is a PRD that's a lot more dense, so. I just, sorry I raised the question, it was, it's a long question.
Yeah, of course, then anything new would have to meet current design, would you agree?
So we know the best case and the worst case.
So do we have a motion?
I will move to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last public hearing is consideration of an ordinance to amend Municipal Code Title 12, Building and Utility Codes, Chapter 4, Mechanical Code. Hey, Kristy.
How are you? Mayor, Council. This amendment is to the Municipal Code for Mechanical to require pull downs in residential or permanent ladders in some commercial applications.
Had quite a bit of discussion about this. Any questions for Kristy before we go to public comment? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so we'll go to the audience to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we will close public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Move to approve.
For motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business tonight, our first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Partial 18.00, requested by Jared Cunningham with Catalyst Design Group on behalf of Rose C. Neal Revival Trust, containing 29.79 acres. The property is located on Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. Kevin?
Yes, this is on Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, about 800 feet southeast of the intersection with Kedron Church Road. The land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, and PRD, which is the Courtyards at Stewart's Creek PRD. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation except for water, which would be provided by CUD. They have indicated they have adequate flow in this area, up to an elevation of 760 feet above sea level. This property does have significant topographic changes from south to north, which would result in a substantial amount of grading in order to meet the CUD elevation requirements, as well as the town's requirements for road and sewer maximum grades. The proposed PRD is for 85 single-family lots on 29.79 acres, for a density of 2.85 units per acre. Access would be from Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, as well as a connection to a stub street in the Courtyards at Stewart's Creek. The proposed minimum lot dimensions are 55 by 125, which translates to 6,875 square feet. The houses would range from 1,600 to 3,500 square feet with a two-car garage. They would be finished with brick, stone, and concrete siding, with the added requirement that any rear-facing elevation fronting Rocky Fork Ambleville Road would be entirely brick. All requirements of the town with regard to setbacks, parking, and open space would be met. The proposed amenities include walking trails, covered gazebo, seating areas, and a tot lot playground area. Previous request for annexation and PRD zoning of this property was recommended for approval by the planning commission in December of 2023. The applicant did request referral by the council on this first reading in December of 2023 and January of 2024, and then prior to the February 2024 meeting, we did withdraw that request. So this council never actually voted on that original request. That request was for 103 lots. The proposed grading would have resulted in a sheer wall, it would have been about 36 feet tall at its highest point. This proposal does decrease the severity of the final grading, eliminating that sheer wall. The planning commission did review this request, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Council questions on this?
The previous one was how many?
It was 103. So it was about a 3.46 per unit per acre density. This is 85 and 2.85. This is 85 and 2.85.
That was like a 12-foot wall or something, or 18-feet wall?
It was, at its highest point, it was about 36 feet.
36 feet?
Yeah. That was at, at the, the rear portion of this property is the steepest. This is, by lowering the density, they're not getting into that area near as much where the, the highest topo is. That's why this is going to be, the grading is going to be actually outside, primarily outside of the lots, whereas before it was going to be more, more, more of the lots were going to be affected. And so it's going to actually be in that open space behind the lots as far, and it's going to be a more, it's still going to be a slope, but it's not going to be that sheer wall.
Natural, I mean, what's there now, would that grade retain, be retained?
No, there wouldn't be retaining, there would be, maybe at the very back, there might be some natural grade retained, but no, that, that area behind, if you look at the concept plan, there's a number 35, that's just kind of their numbering of the lots, kind of behind that area there. There's some relatively steep topography there, it's just not going to be a block straight down, block sheer wall. And those contours are one-foot contours, so that does make, maybe accentuates it a little bit as far as what the grade looks like.
Kevin, the, the houses, the square footage it's showing, is that including garages or does not? Does it?
It would include the garage, yeah.
So the 1,600-square-foot house would include the 400, whatever it is?
Yeah. The reason for that square footage is important because the total square footage on the roof, if you get above 3,600, the power flow sure goes up, and so.
Again, the 1,600-square-foot house would basically be a 1,200-square-foot home.
Correct.
I believe in space.
Correct.
And I think when I was watching Planning that night, it talked about size of the lots. I think the average was what's, the maximum was seven, 7,000 something?
Just, just under 7,000 would be the minimum lot size.
What's the largest?
They're not a lot larger, there's some that were in the cul-de-sac area, the curves, and some of those lots are bigger. Most of the lots are fairly close to that minimum.
And we don't know the breakdown of the difference between the 1,600 and 3,500-square-foot homes, is that correct?
Correct.
One of the things, Jerry, to help, maybe help you answer some of the questions. We have yet to enter into the new phases of density, so Planning looked at this from a standpoint of it had been submitted, the 6,800 minimum.
Yeah, I heard Tim ask that question.
Barely meets the threshold, but of the new density levels, and this being 2.8 units per acre is actually less than an R3 subdivision would allow. So that's the, that's the reason I think that Planning looked at it in favor.
Okay. I just, I guess the thing that concerned me is 1,600 square feet, including a 400-foot garage.
Other questions or comments?
Yes, Kevin, to clarify, you said that the grading issue is going to happen on the backside where the back lots, like the number 35 is. So does that mean that most of these trees are going to come out, or?
Yeah, a lot of those trees are going to come out. The back, the closer you get to that back property line, the higher likelihood they would remain, but a lot of those trees, the tree area would have, would have to be removed in order for the grading to, to be done.
I guess my internal dilemma is we've had ones that have come before us that didn't fall under the new requirements, but they've done everything they could to try to meet those requirements, even though, even though we've not approved those yet, and they've not fallen under those, and.
Well, as we shared in the back when we had the meetings about this.
In the open meeting.
Right. Yeah, I'm sorry, in the public meeting that we met back there, yeah.
Yes.
And everybody was invited.
That's right. That's right.
You know, one of the things we talked about then is how long before, if we adopt new regulations, how long before, much like we do with impact fees, would it be 90 days? Would it be March-ish? So, but to your point, I think much of our development community is starting to understand that that is coming. And I hope they're meeting with each one of you all, or trying to meet with one of you all, because I think they want to get that right going forward. But some of these, as I shared then, are submittals and engineering that have taken place some months ago, probably before those meetings even.
And I guess that's where my struggle is, you know what I mean? That our new regulations are 7, 9, and 11, and the majority of these, Kevin, you said are 7?
6,800.
So not even 7.
And then some are larger, but yeah, the majority are closer to that minimum.
Well, that, what I was looking at, I was looking at the ones adjacent to Saddle Grove right there. Those would have to be, under the new guidelines, those would be the 11 probably, or maybe the nine, at least nine, because that's R3 right beside it.
Correct.
So R3 is a 10,000 square foot, they'd have to be 75% of that, so. And with the 11,000 requirements, that, that would most likely end up being along that side.
When was this brought before us, before, how long has it been?
It was December of last year.
Last year?
Yeah, almost a year ago.
But it never came to us, it only went to Planning.
Yeah.
You think this is coming through now to try to get it ahead of the, the new regs?
I can't answer that question, I don't know their thoughts on it.
Kevin, did we not defer this one time?
Yeah, it was actually deferred twice. Yeah, it came, the Planning Commission recommended, council, it came to council, before you all ever voted on it, they requested deferral twice, and then before that third vote, they So you actually never voted on it, other than to defer it.
Well, I want to go back and revisit something, because we talked about this in the meeting. We're going to have some developments that are going to come in that not yet will meet what we've elected to try to put forward as our new dimensions and lot sizes, and I think we, we all agree that we understood that was probably going to take place, and there's a time coming that things are going to have to change. Some of these have been engineered, money spent, submitted. You have to submit these in advance of us seeing it at Planning, right? So if we're going to see something in December, it has to be submitted in November. And if you start backing those up, to Jerry's point, was this, is this one being brought in to try to sneak under the wire? No, it was submitted before that, so. That's, it's for the council to decide, but I just want to make that clear. That's something I think we all talked about at great length, and I think we have to be fair with people when we tell them, this is the timeline we're looking at to make these changes. Changes are, they are coming, they are coming.
Other questions or comments?
I want to go back to the, the whole grading situation. So I'm looking at what it says as far as open space and green space. How would that be affected if the grade, if this grading is as severe as anticipated?
Well, I mean, it'll still be, I mean, what they're showing with the trees there, they'll be replanting it, they most likely will need to replant it or do something with it to get to stabilize the new slope that's created there. It'll still be open space, it is owned and maintained by an HOA. That area in the back is not really planned, it's not part of their programmed area that would be usable space, it's really just open space.
I just know we're about to lose all the trees, is what it sounds like, and so I'm wondering if it's just going to be a big.
And they are proposing to replant some trees within the, on, on the lots and that sort of thing, along the street in the frontage there. They are proposing some trees to be replanted, and, and again, in that area where that, the new slope is going to be created, they're showing trees there as well. So they would be replanting some trees, they're not going to replant, because this, this property is completely wooded currently, so there's no way they're going to replant all of them. But certainly, they're, they are planning to at least replant some of them as well, on the street trees and around the pond, the storm ponds and those kind of things.
Okay. I think he came set to try to address that.
I think he did too.
Okay.
Other questions or comments for Kevin? I would assume that someone from the development is behind you that might want, might be able to answer some questions. Counsel, are you all okay with that? If you'll come forward and state your name, your address, what company you're with, and if you live inside the town limits.
Sure. Jared Cunningham, Catalyst Design Group, 5100 Tennessee Avenue, Nashville. I do not live in town limits. As, as stated, so you guys saw this a year ago, I believe you saw it at first reading. I was a part, I was the engineer for that project as well for this one. Long story short, the developer dropped it, as you would expect, a 36-foot sheer wall is pretty expensive. So they dropped it, new developer came along and was interested in the project, sands the wall, lowered the density, I think probably the, there's probably some concern with the grading on the backside. I think the thing to keep in mind is about half of that open space in the back gets, would get graded in order for us to tie back into grade. So as Kevin said, as you get further up the hill, a lot of that's going to remain. But I think a good way to look at it is pretty much halfway and halfway down will be graded, and then all of the usable amenity is up front in this case. And as far as timeline and things like that, the developer wasn't trying to beat, trying to beat any timelines, and to be frank, I just found out that there were new things coming at Planning Commission, so, so no, they weren't trying to beat anything, they were simply, like I said, things have been going on for quite some time, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions you guys have, but Kevin's took care of quite a bit of them as well.
Questions for Jared? Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, comments, questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion?
I supported this at Planning, I'll continue to support it here, so I'll make the motion to approve it.
A motion, do we have a second? No second? So it dies for lack of a second. Do I have another motion on the floor?
I'll make the motion to deny.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny. Do we have a second? Work with me, folks, work with me. We've got a motion on the floor to deny. Do we have a second for denial?
A second for the vote.
Okay, we have a second for denial. Discussion.
I'm literally torn right in half on this, because I agree with what Mark's saying. We knew some of these would come forward, but I also know that if we deny this one, then changes have to be made to, to fit the new one. And it's, it's hard.
Other comments?
Mayor, can I ask that the maker of the motion give a basis for the denial, just in case there's something kind of like?
Would the person who made the motion give a basis for the reason for the denial?
Now you're sitting on Planning Commission.
Yeah. I, I had the, I had the issue with just the small homes that are in there. I don't know if that's a, a reason, or you or not, but that's, that's my issue.
It doesn't fit the area. It's got to have something on the record.
Are we good?
Yeah, and just, Councilman Solomon, do you second that?
Yeah, I'm still okay with the second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion. Are you getting ready to say something?
I just want to ask a question about, oh, for instance, the adjacent subdivisions, the courtyards or?
Saddle Grove.
What's the, Saddle Grove, right? What are the size of those homes?
Um, off the top of my head, no, Saddle Grove is R3, they're fair, they're, they're bigger.
That's what I thought.
They are larger, they're R3 lots. Courtyards at Stewart's Creek, there's, there's no homes built yet. That's the 55-plus development.
And most of you will remember when that came in, the reason the secondary road was perceived not to be able to be placed into that property was because of the topography. They're making the topography work here.
As far as the size of the homes, I can't recall off the top of my head what those were.
It's all 55.
Yeah, the courtyard at Stewart's Creek is all 55 plus.
Do you know lot sizes for that roughly?
I don't, they're, they're probably, they're similar to these, though, they're not large lots at all. I mean, there, there's a lot of open space in there, because as you again, the same hillside that this property has is, extends into that property, and there's a lot of steep topography there as well, so there's a lot of open space in that development as well. But I can't remember the lot sizes, no sir, I'm sorry.
Kevin, do you, I don't remember, do you remember what the minimum square footages were of the 55 plus?
I do not remember.
Were they similar to what's being requested here, as you recall?
Probably similar, I, I don't, they were, there was a lot of single-story were proposed, certainly, and that sort of thing, so they were probably, tended to be on the smaller end, just for that reason.
But there's no restrictions on this one, this is not age restricted?
This is not an age-restricted development, no sir.
See, I, I, I perceive a difference in home sizes for age-restricted and such as that, and then this one moves away from that.
You have other comments?
No, not really.
I think we're all struggling with the same stuff.
Yeah, I would love to see this one with the 7, 9, and 11 lot sizes and get rid of, getting rid of those smaller 1,200-square-foot homes.
But we also look at this as, as what is an entry-level home these days, correct?
Yeah.
And there's that. That's not a townhome.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to deny.
Let me ask a question. If we deny it, what does it take for them to bring it back?
They've got to go back through the process.
They go back to Planning Commission recently and go through, start the process over.
Is this all a square footage like Jerry asked about? Is that what this is, the concern? I'm just asking because the developer's here, and I'd love to have him.
My two concerns are square footage of house and lot size. Those are my two concerns.
Well, let me revisit the lot size thing. Are we backing up on what we agreed to in the meetings about enacting that in a given amount of time? We are. That's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, the only thing I'm going to say is I didn't agree to just blanketly approve anything. I think what we said was they would all have to stand on their own, and even Mayor Esther said, I'm not going to agree to just approve it if it meets the check.
No, I get that.
And that's what, so I mean, I don't feel like we're backing up on anything, we're just saying in this case.
We're 200 feet shy of being what the new regulations requires to be per lot, so.
No, not really, because you would require 30% 11, 30%.
Under the new regulations.
Yeah, so it's not just.
So you, in other words, you're saying I want to enact the new regulations on this?
No, I'm saying that along that side right there is the ones that are concerning me, because they're adjacent to larger R3 lots.
That's first I'd heard that. Can we ask him to come back up?
No, that's what I said earlier.
Sure.
Would you mind?
No, I mean, I don't care.
I think he might have something to say about his square footages, I'm, I'm reading his face.
Yes, sure, so I, I think I can probably speak for the development here, but I think as far as the smaller home sizes, I don't think there's an issue necessarily with removing those. I mean, given what it's going to cost to develop these lots and, and, you know, just the sheer development cost, it's probably going to be hard to have a single story. I think at the, at the end of the day, it's just, it was to give them the, the ability, if they needed to do a single-story product for whatever reason, but likely, it's probably going to be what you're seeing elsewhere, just, you know, given the entry into the market. As far as lot sizing, you know, adjacent, I think we can work, you know, I think we've got some opportunity to, to potentially work.
Well, what I was, what I would like to see there is more transitioning, right? So the, the smaller 7,000, 6,600, I don't, I think that would, that's essentially the same thing as our smaller lot size and the new requirements. And adjacent to the courtyards, that would probably be fine, because that's probably what they'll be, or very close. It's just right up against this right side, we're backing up to R3, and you can see some of those lots because. And you can see some of those lots because they're in that cul-de-sacs that are backing directly up to them are pretty large.
Sure.
It's actually the larger lots in Saddle Grove and the small lots. And that's really my biggest concern is that one, if you're looking at the picture here, the right side that kind of follows Saddle Grove.
Sure. Yeah, I think, I think we would have the ability to make those revisions, you know, to make those lots. Sounds like, sounds like the general consensus of the board is my 9,000 square foot lot to...
I would feel a lot better about that. I'm not saying they have to be the 11,000 because that doesn't, not really that much room for that transition.
Right.
I think if those side lots were 9,000 and we could maybe get rid of that 1,200 square foot, I'd be a whole lot better.
I believe we could probably do that.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So Kevin, what is the best way to move forward with that? Because this is first reading. Should it go back to planning? If it's going to be that much of change? Or can it come to us on, can the changes be made and come back to us?
You all have, in a pod, you all do have some abilities to make changes like that. So you could certainly pass it on first reading or send it back to planning to do that. You could also defer first reading and ask them to make those changes before you vote it on first reading. I mean, there's some options there.
Personally, I feel more, I mean, those changes seem pretty significant to me. I'd rather see it go back to engineering and planning.
Here's my only thing about that. My only thing about that is we're kind of doing to planning what they've said is so difficult for them in that we're kind of sending it back because it currently marks all the boxes.
I'm going to say this, not taking into consideration the new regulations at all, I still don't, I think I would still oppose this as it is designed. Doesn't have anything to do with the new regulations.
But I think if we're going to send it back to planning, we have to give them some guidance as to what we're kind of looking for for them to be able to send it back to us. Because I mean...
Is there, is there more than just the two things I mentioned? The 1,200 square foot and the lots?
I'm sitting here thinking about it more and more and more. And, you know, and this has, it's kind of been bugging me all along is we're looking starter homes next to senior living, essentially 55 and up. And then, you know, you go down to Saddle Grove and those are considerably larger lots. And I just don't know that you have a transition that we keep, you know, we've talked continually about the transition. My two cents.
So I personally am comfortable, I would be comfortable with just adding the stipulations that before second reading, those two items were corrected for me personally. I don't know where the rest of you are. But that's, rather than having to go back to planning, I would be okay with just approval based on those stipulations. I understand we have a motion for denial and what that we're going to deal with. But if, that way, when it comes back to second reading, it has to have those improvements.
Kevin, does that give you enough time for your annexation portion of this? Make sure you have enough information out there.
Well, that is, I mean, the annexation, we do have, we got to put the signs up and we got to send letters. Again, we already sent them first time, and send letters again with all the planning services and all that other stuff to it.
So what happens if we defer it? And give them time to get all of their stuff together? Is that the better option?
That, that means the, you know, the annexation piece that Jeff's talking about, we can delay 30 days. Because that delays the notice and the paper and everything.
Would that give you all time to get your stuff together in 30 days to bring back to us? How do you all feel about that? Or are you, my only thing about sending it back to planning is we're sending it back to planning when I think it's going to end up, because they were, planning was okay with it like this. So I think it's more in our lap.
Man, what I'm thinking is that the actual engineering change is really just those 15 or 16 lots down the right side. Because the other lot sizes aren't going to change. They're just not going to build a 1,200 square foot house on. They're just eliminating that floor plan essentially, right? So, so the rest, the engineering is really just that one side. And that's why I was thinking, I don't think it's a significant change really to need to go back to planning.
Jeff?
Yes, the only reason that I prefer deferral is because your next read is going to be your second read. And I'd like for the public, before they come for the second read, to know what you're going to be voting on.
Yeah, I'm good with the deferral. I'm just talking about sending it back to planning. I don't think it, I don't think it needs to go back to planning for the, because it's relatively a minor change, I think.
Okay. So how do you all feel about deferral? Good? Okay. But the motion and the second on the floor is for denial.
So we have to vote on that? Can we withdraw that? What do we have to do?
You can withdraw it, or you can vote on it and vote it down.
If I withdraw my second, that kills it?
Well, prefer it, Mr. Short.
I can withdraw my motion.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Okay, so we've withdrawn the motion to defer. So, I mean, to deny. So I will open the floor for a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to defer for 30 days?
One month.
One month.
Okay, so we now have a motion to defer for one month. Do I have a second for that? Motion and a second. Discussion. Has everybody said what they want to say in regards to direction for Mr. Cunningham so that when they bring it back, we have more of a comfort level? Is there anything else that anybody wants to add?
I am interested in knowing the size of the houses and roughly how many there's going to be.
Some percentages, the breakdowns?
So that's the new regulations you're interested in?
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for deferral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion is deferred for 30 days. Now move on to item two. So let me stop there for one second. Moving forward, do we want to ask, do we want to ask for sizes? Is that something that we want to see before the new stuff is enacted? Does that make it easier for once it gets to us?
Makes it easier for me. I'm not speaking for anybody else. Makes it easier for me.
You're talking about sizes of the lots or sizes of the homes?
Yes.
So that's a yes to both? So asking for the numbers?
Yeah, so I'm confused. How is that new requirements? I mean, that's just what is the plan? I don't understand.
I'm totally lost now, totally. After the meetings we've had, I'm totally lost.
So, it sounds like in moving forward, Kevin, how difficult is it for, before it comes to council, which I think would be beneficial for Planning Commission as well, that the percentage of lot sizes as well as percentages of square footage of the homes, would that be that difficult?
Well, the lot sizes is what we, that's part of the new requirements as far as that percentage.
Not, not that they have the percentages, but what the percentages are of what they're bringing to us.
We're not saying that it has to be 7, 9, 11. We're just saying, what is the plan?
Yeah, that would be something that we would ask for that. That's going to be something we were going to ask for as far as the 7, 9, 11, because they got to meet those requirements.
They're talking about before then.
We're not talking about 7, 9, 11.
Well, I understand that.
This one right now, how many of these lots are 6,500? How many of these lots are 7,000? That's all we're asking. Is the percentage of this...
I mean, we can ask for something we can ask.
It's the average lot size.
It should already be in there, we just don't see the numbers.
I mean, the minimum lot size is what they've given us at this point. Certainly, yeah, we can ask for that. And that's because we're going to be asking for it whenever, assuming you adopt the council or the zoning ordinance amendment until next time on your agenda. That's something we're going to be asking for anyway. So I mean, we can ask for it now if that's something you would like us to do.
I need to understand something from a planning perspective. And Mayor, you just touched on it. When things are brought to us that meet our current regulations, what do we do with it?
I mean, we evaluate, we have evaluated this one.
I'm asking generally.
Yeah.
What do you expect planning to do with it? Because all these meetings that we've had have been evolving around that very topic.
I, I think if you guys are looking at it from a...
We're looking at this like it's less than an R3 development.
If you're looking at it from a list of requirements, it meets the requirements, you approve it and you send it to us. And just like in this case, we're not sending it back to planning. We're saying, we're accepting what planning sent, and we would like these additional changes.
And maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't clarify what I'm asking. I thought that council and planning together, especially council, had indicated that we would move forward with this in a period of time. We wouldn't start requiring it immediately. And to Jerry's point, he wants to know house sizes and lot sizes and so forth and so on. I'm just confused. I'm totally lost now.
And I, and I understand where you're coming from, and I understand...
I don't think you do.
No, no, I do. I think you're frustrated, but I also think the public's spoken to us, and I think we've heard over and over that they have concerns about density and lot sizes. And so what my hope was that...
And I agree.
And, and, yes, and you have agreed. But I think where I'm at right now is even though we're in this in-between phase of, of it checking the boxes, I'm hoping that the developers are going to be willing to be a little bit more flexible and work with us. Like, I mean, it sounds like what we've asked for right now, they're willing to do. But if we don't ask, we're going to get just this.
Well, that's why I wanted him to come back up here. That's why I said I need him to come back up here. Because we need to hear, we need to hear from him, right?
And that's what he said.
Yeah, so...
But if we don't ask?
Right.
They're going to give us just to check the boxes.
But before we get there, Mayor, here's where I'm concerned. And again, I'm not defending development or anything. It's what I do for a living, I understand it. I'm just totally confused on the timing of everything now, based on all four meetings that we had in that council chamber, the conference room in the back, about when we saw the new regulations eventually going to be taking place. They were on our planning agenda the other night. Planning approved the new regulations. We've got to talk about that here at council level. And then, just like when we all increased impact fees, supported it all, we waited about 90 days to enact those impact fees to give everybody a chance to adjust. And that's where I'm confused. I thought that's the conversation we had about the items that were going to come in between now and the time we adopted it. So...
I guess where, where I'm at is what we had before, what the current recommendations or minimum requirements or whatever terms you want to use, we've identified those as not what we want going forward. What we want going forward is the requirements that you guys just voted on that are going to be enacted somewhere in the middle or somewhere between.
And just for notation, I supported all those as well, right? So I'm not arguing a point here about a development or not.
But what this is, is somewhere in between. This is between the time where we had requirements that we now feel like are not good enough and the time that we have new requirements that are more stringent. This one isn't being moved to the new requirements. This one would require 7, 9, 11. It would require other things if we were taking all the new requirements into place.
I understand that.
All we're saying is that this one could be a little better and closer to those requirements if we had a few small changes. And I think that's, I think that's reasonable.
I'm not, I'm not arguing the point necessarily, but everything so far sounds like we're already trying to put everything into the new requirements.
Honestly, I would have, I would have liked to have all the requirements a year ago.
And you're probably talking, you're probably talking...
I am, I was getting ready to tell you, Jerry, because, you know, you wanted to know...
When we had that meeting, I did not agree to that. I agreed that we would listen to it, but I said, "I can't give you a blank check that says I'm going to do this."
I don't think anybody expects that.
Okay, but that's what it sounds like now.
No, I'm looking at an R3 product. That's how I look at it from a planning perspective. This is less dense than an R3 subdivision. So that's how I look at it from planning.
Yeah, I think the density numbers are right, but it doesn't look like the R3 down below. And that's, I think that's the biggest difference.
Well, there's topography on this property that makes it very, very challenging.
Well, yeah, I understand. That, that triangle's going to have some of that topography too. It doesn't just stop and get level.
It does. That, that corner piece down on the purple is all rock bluff.
Yeah, it looks like a hill.
So, but we still have to look at these things. That, and I agree.
Maybe we were trying to do this evening is take this particular development on its face and see how we can improve it, not necessarily matching it to what we're going to do with the new guidelines.
And I guess that's the thing. I think in planning, y'all are going to have to, if it checks the boxes and y'all feel comfortable with that, send it on. And then we're going to have to, we as council are going to have to look at them individually.
Yeah, I, I kind of feel like what you're asking for, Mark, is that if planning approves it, then we, we're going to approve it too. And I don't, I don't think that we can do that.
I'm in total agreement with the new regulations we've all discussed. I'm just confused, that's all. It's my fault maybe, but I'm just confused as to those four meetings, what that produced. A better product is coming, we know that. To me, from a planning perspective, Kevin will tell you this, this matches up pretty well with the things that we talked about from density perspectives. I don't, and I want to be careful. H.G. pointed this out, or I think H.G. pointed it out. What is an affordable home anymore to a young person that's not a townhome? And then down on this end, we're hearing, "I want them to be bigger." And so we try to find product that meets all of our citizens' needs. And if we're going to put a, just put a stamp on a minimum square footage being whatever the number is, 2,000 square feet or more, to get the garage covered in there, where are we, what are we doing? You know? So there's a part of that that I think about, and I think obviously you all do too. H.G.'s the one that brought it up. And...
But Mark, I still look at it from the standpoint of, is this in the right place here?
I understand.
You know, the PRD regulations have nothing to do with it being located between the 55 and up and a larger lot subdivision.
We saw that as a good centerpiece for both.
And, yeah, it could be considered step downs from both, I see that.
But I also think the discussions we have are healthy discussions and bringing up perspectives rather than just everything that's brought before us, everything that's moved through. And Mark, I always appreciate your perspective from your background and what you do day to day too, because I think that's important. But I also appreciate everybody else's perspective as well with concerns that they individually have as well as concerns that we're hearing from the public. So hopefully, we can find a good compromise with what Mr. Cunningham's going to bring in the next 30 days. And, I mean, if there, if it helps you individually to get in touch with council, I think that you would find council would be open to that. So, okay, we will move on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance amending the text of Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance, Article Four, Section 4.070, Plan Development Regulations. Let's talk about it, Kevin.
Let's talk about it. Yeah, this is the zoning ordinance amendment that would implement what we've been talking about for the last however many minutes. This would basically change what we require within planned developments. They're basically, it's section 4.070 is the overall planned development regulation section. The specific requirements, the amendments would renumber the current 4.076 administrative procedure to 4.077, just from the way the ordinance flows. It made more sense to move that one since we're making, adding some things in. To amend section 4.073, minimum lot area and frontage requirements within a planned development, which would implement the new lot size, square footage minimums. And then add a new section 4.076, additional requirements for planned developments with 25 or more residential lots, which would implement all the other discussed items. Everything that's new is, I put the entire 4.070 in your packet just so you have that. But the new items or everything that's changing is highlighted in yellow. Again, it just... Again, it just, again, implements the lot size, the three lot size minimums that we talked about, those percentages. The, what came up earlier regarding the, if a butts zoning, kind of what those lot sizes are, if it's a larger lot size, they have, make that transition happen. And then all the requirements with regards to the facades, the number of different facades they have to have, foundations being covered in brick or stone, not just concrete, block, not repeating the facades, you know, setback requirements, garage design, garage doors, all those kind of things. So everything that we talked about is basically, this puts all that into ordinance form. And so Planning Commission did review it, did recommend approval, was unanimous. Staff would also recommend approval.
So you've summarized it in a couple of minutes, but I want the citizens to understand. We've had months of discussion. We've had joint meetings with our Planning Commission. Council as well as staff have looked at other communities within the state as well as other places. So we have really worked hard on trying to find a balance that doesn't stop development totally, but also is working on managing our growth. So there's been a lot of work that has gone into this. Dave, I know that you and I kind of talked a little bit about this, but I think before second reading, if we could do a presentation so that the public could see, I mean, kind of what we did back with planning and all, so that the public could see exactly what we're talking about, because this is a lot of information. And I think it's really important information. So I do think that will be really beneficial.
Yes, Mayor, and Mr. Riggsby and I, we've discussed that and I think that is probably a good exercise for us to go through.
Okay.
I think, my personal opinion, you guys put it together how you want, but I think you and Mitch used some examples, pictures of homes in different communities that showed the specific design elements that we were talking about. I think that's very beneficial. Rather than just words explaining what we're doing, those pictures showing that this is the altering roof lines, this is the different facades, that kind of thing would really go a long way.
It's, yeah, the presentation will be very similar. We're gonna reuse a lot of that. We're gonna add some additional information to it just, just to help explain kind of what planned developments are. Not everyone knows what that means and that kind of thing. So just kind of in general at the beginning, but then also cover the specifics of this as well and use a lot of the same pictures and different things we looked at.
Mark, one of the things you've said tonight is you have absolutely been in favor of finding that middle ground. And I think you, I think you brought a lot to the table in helping to do that. So, questions or comments on item two?
Just that, just like you said, a lot of people worked very hard on this. A lot of people gave input on it. I mean, even down to the builders and developers working to find something that's palatable to all of us. And I think that the council, for the most part, looks at these as, this is an absolutely terrific place to start. It gives them a place to, to begin the process. And then giving our staff some recommendations also on a better idea of what the council wants, what the Planning Commission will approve and going from there.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is consideration of a resolution setting dates and times for the town council meetings for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a resolution that we have worked in conjunction with the town manager and also with Mr. Riggsby and the Planning Department to kind of look at next year as it relates to Planning Commission meetings and also council regular meetings and workshop meetings. What we have put together for you today is a resolution just outlining the twenty twenty-five calendar year work sessions and regular council meetings. If you approve that tonight, those would be standard for the most part on the second Tuesday and last Thursday of the month, with a few exceptions for meetings that may fall on certain holidays, such as Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas. So there are a few dates in there that would be moved due to those holidays. So with that, we are asking for your approval tonight. And of course, if approved, we will update all of your calendars and make sure that you get fresh calendar invites.
Okay. And also at the end of that last page, it talks about the works, the joint work sessions as well, so, which I think are gonna be really good.
Yes, ma'am. Those will take place on a quarterly basis, based upon the storm waters rotation, which I think is January, April, July and October.
You did good.
Off the top of my head.
Yeah, you did good. Okay, so questions for Amber on any of this?
Just, I'm sorry, one final comment. The, the one that would be most recently changed would be the December twenty twenty-four meeting. We have asked to postpone that to stay away from the holidays upcoming. So that would actually be taken off of December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and moved to the following week, so the Tuesday, January sixth.
Questions for Amber? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Motion is a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a consideration of an appointment of one member of the B Z A to serve an unexpired term ending in twenty twenty-five. Phil Wilson on the B Z A is stepping down due to workload and he has agreed to stay until somebody can replace him. So this appointment is by council nomination and majority confirmation. We had two people apply. One was James Goins and one is Ken Hill. At this time, I will open the floor up for nomination.
I would like to nominate Ken Hill.
Okay. Any other nominations? And I'll close the floor to nominations. And since we only had one nomination and one appointment, then all in favor of Ken Hill serving on the B Z A to serve the unexpired term ending in twenty twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ken. Anything under other tonight? I didn't have anything on my desk. Nope. Okay. Status reports, Rex? Our award-winning Rex. Woo-hoo!
All right. October state share tax, we received seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. And if you look at the chart, last year, at the bottom, we had an annualized rate of two point six percent. And we're currently at two point eight nine percent. So we're tracking with about where we were last year. October local sale tax, we received one million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Last year, the annualized percentage was three point nine percent. And currently, we're at three point six nine percent. So we're a little bit behind last year. But I think we're, we're in good shape.
Good. Questions for...
I'll be working with Mr. Santucci in reviewing the numbers and getting his perspective also.
Okay. Questions or comments for Rex? Okay. Department heads or directors, anything tonight? Okay, then.
I'm gonna make Mr. Strange come up and talk a little bit about some excellent work, that work that we've been doing in the water, wastewater plant, real quick.
Was that a gentle reminder? Is that what that was?
He thought he was gonna make you defend your tie.
It's that tie. The ties made him just lose his mind. That's it.
We're on a winning streak. I mean, what else can you do? So I apologize. Yes. So we had T deck come in and do our annual sanitary survey. Okay. What they do is go to the water plant first, do a lot of having people show them how they calibrate the machines, take readings, do a lot of things there. Then they go to water sewer maintenance, look at all the records, all the backflow testing, all the things that we have to keep up with. And the guys just do a phenomenal job. We scored a one hundred. It's very rare. We had done that a few years ago. Normally, we are in the upper nineties, but a one hundred's fantastic. So kudos goes out to Kevin Relford and his staff at the water plant, Randall McCoy and his staff, one of whom is still here, Freddie. So he gets a double dip tonight. So, but just an absolutely phenomenal job by, by both the water plant and water sewer maintenance. So we're very proud of them.
Nice job. Good job. Thanks.
Hey, Mike, can I ask you a question?
Okay.
Not really off topic, but it might be a little surprise. I was actually discussing the sewer treatment plant with Jerome Dempsey, who's the councilman-elect. And he worked on that project pretty heavily. And he mentioned to me that, and I had never heard this, that when we did our expansion, that essentially, and I don't know the, the numbers, but we were approved for nine point five and we couldn't go to twelve. Something about the amount of water we were putting back into the lake. Can you describe that or explain that to me?
So we were approved to go to nine. We were at five point eight five. We asked to go ahead and get the permit for twelve. T deck said no, because the requirements could change. And obviously, the more you go to, the tighter the requirements get on what you can put out. Okay, we are set up to go to twelve throughout the build and, and the expansion to nine. A few things we would have to add to get to twelve, but right now they would only give us a permit for twelve million gallons a day.
For nine?
Uh, nine, I'm sorry. Yes, excuse me. Yes.
So do we think that they will, if we make whatever adjustments we have to make, that they will approve us up to twelve? Or are we gonna be in a situation where, you know, technically, because they won't allow us to put more water into the lake, that we're gonna be limited?
So what I think will happen is whenever that point, you know, typically, I think we had looked at twelve to fifteen years, we would need to go to twelve. And that depends on growth and, you know, other factors. But I think once we get there, if we show them that we can treat the sewer that's coming, that will go back into the creek down to the level that they require us to do, I think so. But that's more of an answer for T deck to give instead of me. That's...
When you say down to the level, that means not as clean or cleaner?
Cleaner.
Okay.
The levels, the, the restrictions get tighter. The more you put back in, the tighter the restrictions get.
Gotcha. Okay.
But at this point, do you have concerns that we won't be able to get there? Or is that not a concern at this point?
Not at this point right now. You know, we're, as you all know, we're experiencing tremendous growth. So, you know, that twelve to fifteen years could be twelve to nine years. We'll have to see how that all shakes out. But when Jerome and his group did do the design, we have it set up to be able to move to twelve. Now, at that point, T deck would have to say, we're not letting you put any more back. They haven't said that to me. I haven't heard that. So I don't, I don't see that as a thing at this point.
Do we have the opportunities to expand the reuse?
The, we do have opportunities there. It's minimal, minimal money.
Is there a maximum spot that we can go to?
That's the problem, is maximizing it for the amount of money it costs to expand the reuse. Because anything we send through the reuse is taken off of what we discharge into the creek. The takeoff of that is when, you know, we did the new thing with the Corps of Engineers and they got the legislature to approve that we get credit for what we put back in the creek. That takes off of...
What we can take out.
Filling our bathtub with the water plant. So there's a, there's a pull and tug here between, you know, because the more we put back in in sewer, really, the more water the water plant has.
Yeah.
From the course perspective. So give and take, pull and tug. The juice hasn't been worth the squeeze on expanding the reuse because we don't have that big, huge user to really help. Golf courses, obviously, are our biggest user of the reuse right now.
Okay, other questions?
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else? Any other gentle encouragements that we need? Okay, got it. I know. Look, he's even shaking his head. Amber, anything?
Yes, ma'am. I do have the census slide tonight. So just wanted to kind of give an update. The second mailer will hopefully be going out by the end of this week. We are still receiving a trickle of responses through the first mailer, but it's kind of going into that valley. So we're gonna send out our second mailer this week and we're gonna have a fantastic response. I just know it. You can still complete your census even without the mailer. You can call us here at Town Hall at two six seven, five thousand five and provide your information over the telephone. We'll key it right in for you, so you don't even have to find a pen. You can jump online and fill it out with your laptop or your smartphone through our website at townofsmyrna.org. And it's very easy to locate because there's a pop-up that comes up right as soon as you're on our homepage. Or if you would like to wait for that second mailer and jot it down, we'll even pay for your postage. Just throw it back in the envelope and send it into Town Hall. We're only asking for three pieces of information through this census. We just need your street number and the name of your street. We need the number of people residing in the home regardless of age. So we'll even take the names of, you know, grandparents living with you or infants that were just born or even college kids that may be on campus somewhere else that are still your resident at your home. And then just the full name of each resident, so first and last name. That's all of the information that we need. I want to remind everybody that responses are never made available to law enforcement or immigration. They are confidential by law for seventy-two years. There is no citizenship, citizenship question or requirement to complete the twenty twenty-five special census. To date, I'd like to give a little update. We've accounted for eight point eight thousand addresses within the town. So we still have quite a bit to go. We've accounted for twenty-eight point two thousand residents. So we need to double that number. So we're gonna double down and keep sending out those mailers. And also, if we don't get a response from your house after the beginning of the year, we will deploy our firefighters to go out and try to obtain that information by going door to door. So please help us out by calling in. It also benefits you to help keep your property tax low, to maintain our streets and our roadways and to help with essential services within the town. So it's definitely beneficial for citizens to partake in this. And that's it. I'm off my soapbox.
Great. Dave?
Okay, I got a couple of things tonight. First, just want to invite everybody out to the seasonal skating, ice skating there at the SOAC. We have eighty-two, it's an eighty-two by forty-six inch synthetic ice rink. I believe we're gonna open that up beginning on, be November thirtieth? November thirtieth. And we're gonna run that through December twenty-second on Fridays through Sundays only. Friday's gonna be open from eight, four to eight, Saturdays, twelve to eight, Sundays, one to six. Winter break will be closed on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth and the first. For more information, you can go to our website. And the adult cost will be seven dollars. Children's and seniors will be five dollars under twelve. However, if you have the all-inclusive SOAC membership, it is included with that. Okay, in honor of our Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving holiday, Town Hall will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-eighth and Friday, November twenty-ninth. We'll resume regular office hours on Monday, December second. Please join us in thanking our fire, police, water treatment, wastewater treatment personnel for continuing to serve our community during that time. We already discussed the updated dates about the January workshop and Planning Commission meetings. So just note that as well. And so that January council workshop meeting is Tuesday, January seventh at five P M. And the Planning Commission is Jan, is on January ninth at five P M. Christmas tree lighting ceremony. I'm very much looking forward to seeing this for the first time on Tuesday, November twenty-sixth. Over there in our depot... uh, over there in our Depot District, uh, ninety-eight Front Street. Uh, there'll be sing-alongs, there'll be food trucks on-site, photos with Santa and Mrs. Claus. Hope you can all make it out there to the Depot District on Tuesday, November twenty-six for our tree lighting ceremony. The event is scheduled from six P.M. to, uh, eight P.M. I assume that we, uh, light the tree around six?
Around six fifteen.
Six fifteen? Okay.
Whenever Santa gets there.
All right. Well, everyone's...
And Chief Bill's usually in charge of that.
Leaf collection reminder, uh, as our leaves begin or continue to fall, uh, please remember to place your leaves in a biodegradable leaf long bag, and place the bag next to the street for pickup. Leaf pickup will occur on a regular, uh, brush wrap. And please remember, we are unable to pick up anything in a plastic bag. Also want to, um, remind everybody that we're doing our food drive. The Twenty-third Annual Smyrna Fire Department Food Drive concludes on Saturday with, um, so far, I believe, we have eight thousand three hundred ninety-eight non-perishable food items donated, so we want to thank the schools that helped us with this food drive. Um, great, we want to appreciate, uh, and say thank you to Cedar, Cedar Grove Elementary, Smyrna Elementary, Stewart's Borough Elementary, and Stewart's Creek Elementary. Uh, throughout the twenty-three-year food drive, uh, we have collected more than five hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred and twenty items. Just want to just say thank you to the, the fire department and, uh, the elementary schools for helping us out with that tremendous effort, so, thank you so much. That's all I have for this evening.
Great. Jeffrey L. Raquel?
Okay, I have a slide. So, thank you to this fantastic group from Stewart's Creek High School. The Stewart's Creek Robotics Club students, along with more than forty-five student volunteers, parents, and teachers, spent Saturday morning clinging to the school's campus. Together, they collected twenty-six bags demonstrating the power of teamwork and community spirit. They love where they live, and we are incredibly grateful for their hard work and dedication. If you would like to be a part of this impactful program, please visit www.townofsmyrna.org/adoptahighway, highway slash roadway, or you can call six one five four five nine nine seven six six to learn more about the Adopt a Roadway or Stream Cleanup program. All right. Woo, that was a mouthful.
Good job.
Um, also, I would like to say congratulations to Rex, and congratulations to, um, Mr. Strange and the Water Department. And thank you to all of the employees that were recognized today. Thank you for what you do for the city. We really appreciate all that you do and how you serve this community. And, um, I'd also like to say, um, thank you to the citizens. We just finished the election, and I was able to stay, so I'm, I'm kind of excited about that. So, um, thank you to all the citizens who came out and voted. Um, congratulations to my counterparts, Councilman Steve Sullivan and Councilman-elect Jerome Dempsey. And I look forward to serving the citizens of the Town of Smyrna for four more years. Thank you.
It's she.
Okey-dokey. I think I've got a, um, slide up there. We talk every, um, every month, twice a month, we talk about love where you live, and that's dealing with basically, uh, picking up our trash in Smyrna and trying to keep Smyrna clean, but we're gonna take it to another level this year with the state enter into with No Trash November. Nobody trashes Tennessee. This is a T-Dot initiative, uh, the Fourth Annual No Trash November. It's a month-long statewide initiative encouraging Tennessees to keep their communities clean. No Trash November aims to remove fifty thousand pounds of trash from the roadway. And, you know, how cool would it be if they didn't have to remove fifty pounds, fifty thousand pounds of trash from the roadway if people just didn't throw it out there? Start at the source. Um, Rex mentioned that our sales tax were down a little bit. That's disturbing, folks. We have to shop local. We're coming into the holiday season. It's so dead gum easy to go to your computer and click on Amazon, but, you know, start now, buy local, and have it done before, you know, the holidays get here. A major percentage of the town's budget, uh, comes from shopping local. So, stay with that. Keep the, keep the sales tax here at home. I have, um, two celebratory messages. Yesterday was my mother's birthday. Everybody who knows Mary Lou Thomas knows what a good mother she is to me. And, uh, I do recognize the fact of how very fortunate I am to have my mother and to her... Mama took off for Florida this morning, okay? You know, she's, uh, well, she's up there. I almost...
Get yourself.
You almost said it. You almost said it. She's remarkable. She's remarkable. Um, how about this one? My grandson, Henry, will be eleven next Friday. We don't meet again before then, and, uh, um, him and Mary Esther are just big buddies, and she stood him up yesterday morning.
That is not true. He left. He went home.
That's all I've got for tonight.
We were supposed to have breakfast, and he left me. He stood me up. Jerry?
I think, yes, I do. Uh, last Wednesday, I had the privilege to go to, uh, Rock Springs Elementary to do the amazing shake. Uh, I've done these before at some of the other schools. This is the first time I've ever done the one where it was the second round. And, uh, the first round, they had already narrowed it down to just a, a certain amount, uh, smaller group, and then they, from there, they were gonna, uh, pick the winners. And, uh, I tell you, those kids were, they were really, really good. Uh, I know I had, uh, at my center, the job that I was supposed to do was to be a player on their team. And so, I told them immediately, I said, "Okay, your job is to be the coach of our team, and you're supposed to, uh, give us a pep talk. We're down by fifteen points at halftime, and you're supposed to, uh, give us a pep talk." And I said, "I'm on the team," and then there was an empty chair. I said, "They're on the team," and the other one, he said, they said, "There's a person here that's on your team." So, this one particular, uh, young lady, she started giving the pep talk, and, I mean, she was looking at the empty chair, and she said, told that chair what they needed to do, rebound better, box out, those types of things. The next chair, they went over and told, uh, she said, "Now, you need to do this. You need to, uh, when you get the shot, you take it over." And she looked at me, and she says, "Mr. Short, if you don't start playing better, I'm gonna put you on the bench." It was so quick, she was so good, and, uh, but they were all that way, and, uh, it was, it was just a lot of fun, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to go and be there that day, and, uh, those are some, uh, those are good kids. We, uh, we've got a good generation coming up, and, uh, so, thanks, uh, for that invitation.
Okay, um... Wait a minute, did Coach Rex ever say that to you?
Oh, gosh, he brought back memories. Uh, my congratulations also to, uh, to the two that was, uh, Brandon and Rebecca tonight. Uh, that's, uh, that's awesome, what they, uh, their achievements. Uh, Mike and the utility department and all, uh, and the water department, uh, thanks for all you guys have done. We really appreciate that. The, um, Rex, congratulations to you as well, and, uh, I'm not surprised, but, uh, just a congratulation. We do appreciate every, everything you do. And then, uh, for those that have just been elected, Raquel, Steve, and Jerome, uh, I, uh, I want to congratulate you as well, and, uh, look forward to serving with, with you, uh, continually. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Great. Steve?
All right, I also have a slide. Um, yesterday, we were able to participate, was it yesterday? Yeah, yesterday, in the Veterans Day Program at the Coos Memorial. Town of Smyrna is grateful to honor our veterans on, at the Veterans Day Ceremony. Uh, we honor all those who have served and are thankful for your service. We had Speakers Commander Darryl Burke, who is always entertaining, and Colonel Wade Reed, and the Smyrna High School Choir. Um, special thanks to Chief Bill and, uh, Chief Jason there on, uh, their help, as well as Smyrna Parks and Rec, the administration, and all the folks that made the event possible. We moved this ceremony here, what, three or four years ago, I think, and it's just, um, it's given it, to me, it's given it a whole new life, a whole new meaning, being there at, at, uh, the Coos Memorial for this event, so it's a phenomenal event. Um, I also had the opportunity to speak at Thurman Francis. Actually, I was the master of ceremonies for their, uh, their annual Veterans Day Program. Uh, they have each class, or each grade participates in the program by performing something, whether they do, uh, interpretive dance, which I'm sure Mark and Tim would have enjoyed, uh, as well as, uh...
Don't start dubbing me with Tim.
Um, there, there were poems, there were, obviously, the string orchestra played there, the sixth-grade band, the eighth-grade band. Um, it was a, it was a very, very good program, and it's, you know, Thurman Francis Arts Academy, so it was all performing arts, and, uh, the gym was full, all the students were there, as well as, I'd say, probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred, uh, parents and, and, uh, adults that came to visit. So, it was fun. I did that yesterday afternoon. Uh, I appreciate Mark, uh, Dr. Mark Gagne for the invitation. Um, and then, uh, do you have something for Lions Club? No? Then, last night, um, the mayor and I attended the seventy-fifth birthday of the Lions Club here in Smyrna. Uh, they were started in nineteen forty-nine, um, so seventy-five years. They did a great job. We had an amazing meal. Um, I def- told them it was definitely better than what I would have gotten for dinner, so I was very excited.
Be nice. Be nice.
I didn't say who was gonna provide it. I mean, it would have been better even if it was a good cause.
That's right. That's right.
No win, no win. Um, but, yeah, it was a very good, very fun, uh, night. It was at the senior center, um, and, uh, there were two people there specifically that were recognized, Ed Garner and Eugene Hardiman. Both of them, um, fifty years or more in the same club, uh, in the Rotary Club, so they've been serving a long time. Um, the, the, one of the guest speakers, Bob Corlew, was one of the guest speakers, and he mentioned that this was the eleventh Lions Club, uh, formed in this particular district back in nineteen forty-nine. So, uh, pretty, pretty cool accomplishment for them, and I hope them another seventy-five years. Um, someone mentioned seventy-five more years, and they said it would be, uh, two thousand and ninety-nine. So, in two thousand and ninety-nine, they'll celebrate one hundred and fifty years. Let's see, we also, congratulations, Mike, um, and Rex. You guys, uh, like Jerry said, I'm not really surprised, um, I'm not even surprised, Rex, that you didn't tell us, right? I'm not surprised about that at all, uh, but you guys do a great job. You do, uh, you, you take your jobs extremely serious, serious, and you make them, you know, part of who you are, and I appreciate that. Let's see, anything else? Um, nope, I think that's it. Happy birthday to Mary Lou. She, uh, volunteered, uh, on Election Day for me, and, and I very much appreciate her. Um, so, happy birthday to her in Florida. And, uh, to echo, uh, everyone else, thank you again for the citizens of Smyrna for giving me another chance to serve, um, four more years, I am grateful for. I look forward to working with the current council and, and Jerome as he comes on the council. I think his civil engineering background is gonna be an asset. Um, I've always said that we have a good mix of professionalism on our, on our council. We have an attorney, we have real estate, we have private, uh, small business owners, we have an old guy, and then we have me. So, now, we're adding a civil engineer. So, we've got a good mix. I didn't want to say which one. I said, "One's retired and one's old. They'll let them fight it out." But, no, I, I...
Jerry, you want a three-millimeter rebuttal? I want to change my vote.
Too late. But, yeah, thank, thank you guys for the opportunity, and I look forward to serving with y'all.
I also have a slide. Um, we had the, uh, fun time of going over to, um, Candy Cloud Ribbon Cutting. They are located in the Target Shopping Center. Congratulations to them on their grand opening, and welcome to the community to them. Uh, they serve a lot of coffee and creamery and a lot of, uh, fruit drinks and things of that nature. It's kind of cool, so, go over there and check them out. The menu's, uh, colorful. It's a colorful menu. Did I say something wrong?
No.
Okay. Uh, I want to say congratulations to my daughter Amber and her husband Jason. Today is their thirteen-year wedding anniversary, and this weekend, we're celebrating my little grandson, which is one of theirs, to be six years old, so I want to give them a shout-out. Rex, uh, gosh, Rex, I look back there, and I've known you an awful long time, and they're right. You've been the same constant, you know, I don't, I don't want to brag on myself or anything, but congratulations to you and Mike, not just to you guys, but your team, your staff, uh, the ones that help you, uh, operate those departments every day. Actually, we have great staff in every department, but you guys got recognized, so I want to point it out. Uh, to the elections, to Councilwoman Raquel Peebles, and to Councilman Steve Sullivan, and to Councilman-elect, uh, Jerome Dempsey, congratulations to all of you. You know, uh, elections are not easy. There's a lot of work, a lot of work, so if you've never involved yourself in one, uh, you should try it before you chastise people for what they do, because, let me tell you what, behind the scenes, there's meetings, there's phone calls, everything you can imagine takes place in the seats we fill. So, I want to thank them, I want to thank Dave for his new leadership here, and Amber for helping us get, uh, you and your team, right, Casey, for helping us get the census, trying, trying to get the census done, and, uh, so thank you all for your hard work. This past week, I think November fifth, was, uh, Assistant Chief John Lear's thirtieth, uh, anniversary with the town. I talked to him the other day when we were there, doing the penning ceremony with some of our officers, and I told him, I said, "You shouldn't have told me that, 'cause now I'm gonna mention it Tuesday night." So, uh, so there's that. John, congratulations on thirty years. And last but not least, is the veterans. We just celebrated Veterans Day. Steve, thank you and Kevin for your service, and anybody in this room, thank you for your service. Dan, I know you did too. Um, we appreciate our veterans more than we probably get an opportunity to tell them that. My two favorite veterans are my parents. They're no longer here with us, but, uh, I remember traveling the globe with them at different Air Force bases and as a child, and the memories I have from that are, uh, just wonderful. As an Air Force family, making ends meet on their income, but never missing a meal. Right, it was just always a tough grind, and, uh, I just appreciate my parents more than you guys know. They were veterans, so I have an affinity and a lot of love for our veterans in the United States of America. So, Dave, you too, you served in the Marine Corps, and I appreciate that, so, with that, I'll leave it there. Thank you, Mayor.
A couple of slides for me. Um, I want to thank Cub Scout Pack Eight Forty-two for inviting me to come out to talk about my role as mayor, um, and the voting and election process. I will tell you that they had lots of questions. Um, got into my favorite ice cream, they wanted to know my favorite restaurant, so they had quite a few, quite a few questions. Um, the Smyrna Parks and Recreation Department is seeking nominations for the 2024 Kenneth Coon Victory Lifetime Service Award and Young Leader Award. Nomination forms can be located on our website, and the deadline for nominations is November fourteenth. Thursday, thanks. Um, Small Business Saturday, take the opportunity on Saturday, November thirtieth, to shop local for Small Business Saturday. Small businesses are the backbone of our retail community and make up sixty-four percent of our business community. And HG, do you want to talk a little bit about sixty-eight percent?
Sixty-eight percent. When you shop locally and buy from an independent, um, business in town, sixty-eight percent of the money, of your dollar, sixty-eight cents out of your dollar, stays in the community. And as you deal with a, um, a business which is like just a franchise or something that has sent their money out of town, that sixty-eight percent shrinks. And then, Amazon, sorry, you know, that's a big zero for us, so, uh, shop local.
So, I have a lot of people ask me, "What is the sixty-eight percent that's on the back of my computer?" So, hopefully, it's just a reminder to all of us to keep our dollars local. Um, Stewart's Creek Locker Room Dedication. Jerry, um, Raquel, and myself, uh, attended, um, the Stewart's Creek High School Girls Basketball Program Locker Room Reveal. The school received more than fifteen thousand dollars in donation from eighteen generous donors, so congratulations to all. It was an amazing-looking locker room, so, um, they did a really nice job. Um, save the date for the town's annual Christmas parade. The Forty-Ninth Annual Town of Smyrna Christmas Parade and Food Drive will be held on Sunday, December eighth, at two P.M., uh, on Lowry Street. There is still time to enter, and, um, don't forget to bring non-perishable food items that we will have, um, employees that will be walking the parade route to pick up those non-perishable food items. You'll see, um, all of us tonight have on black or red. You'll see, um, all of us tonight have on black or red and we're doing that because Stewart's Creek High School is in the second round of the football playoffs. This is the first time they've made it to the playoffs and they'll play Friday night at seven P.M. at Red Hawk Stadium. So if you have time, come out and cheer on the Red Hawks. Um, I will tell you, it is a lot of fun. They've got a great band and, um, it will be an exciting... They play Brentwood, so it'll be a really good game, so...
And this is also their last home game, right? If they win, I think they have to go away for the next game.
Do they? Okay, I'm not sure about that.
So if you want to see them play, this might be your last one to be able to see them at home.
So come out and cheer on the Red Hawks. Um, congratulations, Raquel and Steve and Jerome. But also want to say, um, Mark, you touched on it a little bit, running for public office is not easy. So to all six of the people that put themselves out there, um, I want to say thank you and, um, I know it was a tough time, but we appreciate you wanting to serve the community. Um, we talked about Stewart's Creek Basketball, we talked about Veterans Day. Steve, you talked about the Lions Club. It was, was nice reminiscing. They had a booklet of all of the past presidents and people who had gotten awards and there was a lot of people that were the foundation of our community for, for many years that I, to be honest, had forgotten about. And so it was nice to get to reminisce about them. Um, so Chief and I had a little interesting event today. I just want to say this because I want you to know that there are scams out there. I got a phone call on my cell phone from Town of Smyrna with the police department phone number. I was on another, I was actually talking to Dave and so I let it go to voicemail thinking, eh, it's somebody from the PD, I'll give them a call back. Phone call I got was from supposedly Sergeant Williams because I had missed jury duty for the Town of Smyrna. Well, we don't do jury trials in the Town of Smyrna, so I couldn't have had jury duty. And, um, he explained to me that I was going, there was a warrant out for my arrest and went on and on and so actually merged Chief in onto the call so he could listen and, um, he was trying to get me to bring fourteen hundred dollars to be deposited so that I wouldn't be arrested. Now luckily, I knew that it was a scam, tried to, tried to see if we couldn't, um, figure out who it was, but there are a lot of people out there who might not know that. It looked like it was from the Town of Smyrna. It had the Town of Smyrna's phone number for the PD. So just be aware that there are people out there trying to do some not-so-nice things that aren't on the up and up.
Mayor, this culprit now knows not to use the line that you're wanted for jury duty in the Town of Smyrna.
That's right. Absolutely, absolutely.
Probably shouldn't call the mayor.
Right.
Well, I, I almost said, I almost said...
You shouldn't add to the police chief.
That's right. But I will say, the police chief was out patrolling the parking lot because they told me to meet him at the PD parking lot and so I, he was out there patrolling. I'm not sure what he would have done if he'd have found him, but he was... Oh, you would have gotten him? Yeah. Would I have had to chase him or would you have? Would you have done it?
I talked about that.
Okay. Um, I do want to make an announcement that Tuesday, December the tenth, at four P.M. is when we'll be doing the swearing-in of our new council members. We usually do it at the November workshop, but the Rutherford County Election Commission is not certifying the election till that night, so we could not do it till after certification. So the new council member, or the new council member and our returning council members will be sworn in on Tuesday, December tenth at four P.M. here at Town Hall. Okay? Anything else? Okay, nothing else, we're adjourned.